I want to call the January 27th Novi Library Board Meeting to order. And would you all join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and I'll ask Member Bartlett to please call the roll.
Trustee Crawford.
Here.
Trustee Dooley.
Here.
Trustee Mitchner.
Present.
Trustee Wood is absent. Trustee Yu.
Present.
Trustee Bartlett is here. Trustee Chair Currie is absent. Student Member Karkala.
Here.
And Student Member Sully.
Present.
Okay, I feel like I should say something to everyone because you'll notice that Member Bartlett, Trustee Bartlett, is wearing a hat. It is not so that we don't get any emails from people and they tell us that during the pledge he wore a hat. So he had some surgery on his head, and so the doctor suggested that he continue to wear a hat, so I guess his brains don't fall out on the table while we're speaking or something untoward would happen. So no disrespect on his part, nothing intended by that way anyway. So the approval of the regular agenda, I would, for one thing, I would like to amend the regular agenda. At the very end of the meeting, you will notice it has us entering enclosed session and then reconvening to adjourn. What we're going to, what I'm suggesting, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn and then enter closed session. We do not intend to come back. We're not going to be voting on anything. We're going to be discussing the mid-year review. So I'm going to ask for a motion to just adjourn and then go into closed session rather than the way the agenda reads currently. Any questions? Yes?
Thanks. So from what I understand with the OMA, I think we have to come back for compliance purposes, from what I understand.
I mean, I'll ask the attorneys for opinion, but...
Yes, when you come out of your closed session, you'll vote to come out of your closed session and then you'll adjourn.
Oh, because I just saw the City Council do this.
No, but I understand what you're saying. You want to let everyone else know that you're not going to have any other agenda items or business after the closed session. I think that's totally appropriate to indicate that. But you will, I mean, to indicate you're going to adjourn after the closed session adjourns.
So what you're saying is then that we will need to come back out.
And then adjourn.
And then adjourn. Okay. I thought we were okay, because I watched City Council do that, and that's the way they were doing it. You'll have to tell, you'll have to tell the other attorney that he probably should correct them. We'll do it properly.
Okay.
Thank you, Trustee Mitchner.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other corrections or additions to the agenda, the regular agenda? Okay, seeing none, we will vote on the regular agenda?
Motion.
We need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion. Second?
A second.
Okay. Please call the roll.
Trustee Dooley?
Yes.
Trustee Mitchner?
Yes.
Trustee Yu?
Yes.
Trustee Bartlett votes yes. Trustee Crawford?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay. Now we'll move to the consent agenda. And are there any questions about the consent agenda or any discussion? Okay. I'll ask for a motion then to approve the consent agenda as printed.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as printed.
Okay.
I'll second.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Member Bartlett, please call the roll.
Trustee Mitchner? Trustee Yu?
Yes.
Trustee Bartlett votes yes. Trustee Crawford?
Yes.
Trustee Dooley?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay. And now we're going to have a little presentation, I believe, from Dana, if you would. Dana, Britannic, I've learned how to say it, so.
All right.
It's all yours.
Oh, where am I going? Okay, perfect. So thank you so much for having me here tonight. I am presenting our annual report for 2020 to 2021. And I'm just going to jump right into it and start with our accomplishments and milestones. And really, at the beginning of the fiscal year, one of our big accomplishments was reopening our building safely. We were closed because of COVID, and on July 6th, we reopened, and we're providing in-person services again for our community. First, we kind of restarted with some timers, and people could come in at their leisure and browse, and finally, get to the collections I'm sure they were, you know, dying to look at again. And so that was a huge, huge accomplishment right at the beginning of the fiscal year for us. And then next, we revealed a new library website. This was something that was worked on with the City of Novi at the same time they were updating their website as well. And so our new website has a lot of visual features, an accessibility menu, a new navigation. It has a more updated and modern look to it, and a lot of ways to be creative and visually representing what the library is about. Our next, I mean, this, I would say, opening was great, but Lake Shore Lending Library was also very huge. Michigan's first self-service library kiosk was opened at Lake Shore Park, and this was generously sponsored by Community Financial Credit Union, and they are sponsoring it for $40,000. So a huge thank you to them. The kiosk holds 235 items. That guest can come out with her Novi library card and check out. We've done a lot of different tours out there. We've been doing programming out at Lake Shore Park to get Novi residents in the area to visit the Lake Shore Lending Library kiosk and see what it's all about. Our next is we advanced diversity, equity, inclusion awareness. So we did a collection audit for diverse titles, and we also did many book and cultural art and artifact displays over the year. A lot of programming, definitely done by the wonderful Gail Anderson, and a lot of learning opportunities for our community to come in and discuss a lot of different issues that were happening in the current times. The DEI webpage was completed as well, and it includes a lot of resources, book title, or book lists, links to past programs. So a lot of our programs were recorded, so they're on YouTube playlists and Facebook as well. So you can always go back and re-watch them, and links to local organizations, too, that are helpful. Our next is our wonderful iQ Makerspace was expanded with new technology. A huge thank you to the iQ team for being so flexible and available for taking appointments, so guests could now come in and start making things again. I'm sure a lot of people were, you know, at home wanting to be creative and use our equipment, but they couldn't. So luckily, we're back open for those appointments, and they could start creating again. And again, thank you to the Friends, too, because they've always sponsored so much of this new technology, like our sublimation printer, which can do a lot of, could sublimate on mugs and t-shirts. It's just a colored print that's on there that doesn't wash off, and our EINSCAN 3D scanner. Some more accomplishments was we figured out a new way to reach Novi residents while we were closed. We continued on making podcast episodes that featured author interviews, updates about the library, things like that. We welcomed our Friends volunteers back into the building for donation collection. It was, I think, one of the main questions we got in admin for months was, please, we want to donate our books. They had so much time to clean out their basements and bookshelves that they wanted to bring them in. So that's what, we finally opened it up, and they could do that in a safe way. I did talk to Sue Johnson, the president of the Friends, and since they reopened, the book nook has, they've made $28,000 in sales since then. So I think that's amazing, to just push out there. And I want to mention also, they've made over $11,000 in membership since then, too. So yes, just want to make sure that people know that they are still going strong, even with COVID and those challenges. We also reviewed building and HR policies, and we hired an HR specialist to help expand our hiring process and bring DEI training opportunities to our staff, which we're currently doing right now in this new fiscal year. Now, looking forward, it was fun going through this. Kind of later, you know, I'm halfway through the fiscal year now, so it was great going through these and being like, oh, yeah, we're doing this, we're doing that. So first is advancing our outreach to, I want to say it's actually over 24,000-plus library cardholders with valid emails in our system through Patreon Point. We've already started using that, and it's been amazing to reach those cardholders and give that information directly into their hands. And with Patreon Point comes along initiating an online library card signup and renewal. They have been amazing with working with us on that, and we're excited to say it is coming soon. So I know that's going to be a huge thing about accessibility and breaking down that barrier. If you can't get to the library to sign up for a library card, or, you know, you just don't want to come to the library, and you want to check out digital items, you can just go online at some point, and you'll be able to sign up for your card. We're also going to be creating more partnerships with community organizations to advance DEI at the library. And like I talked about earlier with Lake Shore Park, we are increasing our program and outreach that way to make sure that we're reaching those residents in the area and that they're getting services and programming as well. Another big thing coming is our NPL At Your Door and Materials by Mail service. Again, that's a huge accessibility, too. So anybody who is unable to come to the library for physical means, or maybe you just have surgery and you can't come in for a couple weeks, it's something that you'd be able to sign up for. That's coming soon. Completing specialty DEI staff training, like I just talked about, and we're doing that currently. And we're applying for the Quality Services Audit Checklist, CUSAC, doing that accreditation again, because that is coming up, too. Here is the budget for that fiscal year. So the total budget was 3,167,504. We came in under with our expenditures at 3,400,000. So it's great. Sorry, trying to read long numbers is hard. Thanks. All right. And this is a lot of numbers and words up here, but I just want to point out a couple important ones. So circulation was amazing this past year. It was over 950,000 items were checked out, which is the highest that's ever been before, and that includes digital and in-person materials. Another one is library card, or library guest visits of over 178,000 people coming through our doors over the past year, and program participation, too. With most of our programs being virtual, people are still signing into Zoom and going on Facebook Live to check out and see what we have to offer. Some sponsorships and donations, I'm going to mention Community Financial again, for their donations, $10,000 for four years that they did for Lake Shore Lending Library. Some more sponsorship and donations, and then the Friends of the Novi Library, which they gave us $23,278 that we could use on furniture and technology, programming, a lot of programming over last year. And then the library was rated 96% in its quality of public library services by a survey by the City of Novi, so I just wanted to point that out as well. Next, we have diversity, equity, inclusion. So this was the statement that was approved by the board in 2021. I mean, I'll just read it. "The Novi Public Library is committing to ensure that every Novi community member, library guest, board of trustee member, library staff, and volunteer are treated with dignity and respect. Discrimination, bigotry, and racism will not be tolerated. The board and staff are dedicated to promoting diversity, equity, and inclusion in order to create a comfortable, safe, and supportive library environment for all." And then these are the goals that were also approved in September. And these are the goals that library staff that guides us in the ways that we create our collections, that we plan our programs, and that we learn and educate ourselves, create partnerships with the community, and how we serve the Novi community on a day-to-day basis. So just to wrap up, here are some photos from different things that happened throughout the year. Just want to say that 2020 and 2021 was a year of growth for NPL. We grew physically in that we opened up our extension of the library at Lake Shore Lending, or Lake Shore Park with Lake Shore Lending Library. We grew mentally. Staff came together after all the uncertainty and the challenges and fear of COVID to successfully open up the building again and provide those services for our community that were without them for months. And I know that they needed them. They relied on us. And lastly, our DEI development and growth. Where staff, we began our journey in learning about DEI initiatives and how we can be a library for everyone. So 2021 and 2022 calls for even more growth, and a huge one will be outreach and accessibility, and of course, more DEI development. "The Novi Public Library truly informs and inspires and includes, and I'm so proud and honored to be working with such passionate library staff, where the needs of the community are at the forefront of everything they do." So thank you so much for having me here today. Do you have any questions? Let me know.
Does anyone have any questions or comments about the presentation? It was slick. It was very slick.
Make it fast.
It was really good.
Thank you.
Good job. Good job.
Great job, Dana.
Thank you.
I know I particularly love to see the plans for the future, you know, the things that are coming up. I mean, I think that's exciting. Some of these things are very innovative and creative, and I love to see those kind of things coming up. So.
That's coming soon.
Anybody else? Anyone have anything to say? No, you dazzled everybody here. You just dazzled them all.
Thank you, Dana.
Yeah, thanks so much. Okay, we are now entering our first public comment. So in order to hear citizens, all citizen comments at a reasonable hour, the Library Board does request that speakers respect the three-minute time limit. This is not a question-and-answer session. However, it's an opportunity to voice your thoughts with the Library Board. Citizens must state their first and last name and address. Anyone? Okay.
Hi, Sharon Trumpy, Novi resident. First, a big thank you to Dana and all of the staff for their amazing work on DEI. Now for the board. 255 days ago, this board unanimously approved a statement by President Crawford, which reads in part, "The Novi Public Library is committing to ensuring that every Novi community member, library guest, board of trustee member, library staff, and volunteer is treated with dignity and respect. Discrimination, bigotry, and racism will not be tolerated. 227 days ago, the board received a formal staff complaint against trustee Chair Currie, which stated, 'It is my belief that he is mismatched for the DEI committee and does it a disservice.' 199 days ago, community member made a public comment at the Library Board meeting sharing her concerns regarding trustee Chair Currie's public social media posts. 164 days ago, trustee Mitchner made a formal complaint about trustee Chair Currie alleging that he had mistreated her during a DEI committee meeting. In response, the board has done nothing. You have spent 164 days failing to ensure that your trustee is treated with dignity and respect. 150 days ago, a community petition was delivered to President Crawford demanding the removal of trustee Chair Currie as DEI chair. Over 280 community members have signed the petition. In response, the board has done nothing. You have spent 150 days failing to ensure that your community members are treated with dignity and respect. 136 days ago, President Crawford announced that she was pausing the board DEI committee indefinitely. She also stated that she believes she could find offensive content on the social media of, quote, "any other person on a committee or commission in this city." This is perhaps true of President Crawford, as her own social media includes, "Can we still order black coffee? Are brownies being taken off the shelf? Is White Castle changing its name? I'm sure Cracker Barrel is screwed." You have spent 136 days not just tolerating, but excusing and endorsing bigotry. 101 days ago, trustee Chair Currie approached a young black woman after the Library Board meeting and told her that his social media posts remain up in public because, quote, "Nothing I said is offensive." To briefly review, these posts include referring to Vice President Kamala Harris as a skank, mocking a transgender actor by questioning how many closets there are, and contending the police gilling of Eric Garner was the mob getting more than they had asked for. For 101 days, you have failed that young lady, a member of our community, by failing to acknowledge or apologize for a member of your board's disrespect. 43 days ago, trustee Chair Currie referred to me and other community members who have attended Library Board meetings as members of the Novi Virtue Signal Inquirer. You sat by silently, giving your tacit endorsement to a trustee treating community members with disrespect at a board meeting. 255 days ago, this board unanimously supported a statement that every board member and community member would be treated with dignity and respect, and that bigotry would not be tolerated. How many more days will pass before you keep your word?
Anyone else?
Good evening. Jason Mitchner, Harrier Place. So I wanted to address the board and President Crawford. I thought that was a great presentation, the annual review, and I was really impressed by how much the library has devoted their efforts to DEI. and I was really impressed by how much the library has devoted their efforts to DEI. And just for historical purposes, I know some of the board members were not here when the DEI committee was founded. The diversity and, uh, diversity and equity audit that the library touted as one of their five or six major milestone accomplishments was actually originated in the DEI committee, which currently is not functioning. So I just wanted to bring that up, as that is a crowning achievement of the library and they should be proud of that, but that effort originated in a committee which is no longer meeting. I think that there's so much more that the library could do and for the community, and it's very beneficial. But unfortunately, one of the major generators of those type of major milestones and events is currently being paused. I think that also the, the statement also was, though not generated directly by the committee, was inspired by efforts in the committee. And also, the entire goal settings that were set in September of 2020 were also from the original DEI committee. So that's three of the main things that were presented. And even the staff committee, DEI committee, which is still doing a lot of work, owes its very existence to the board DEI committee, which originated back in 2020. So I think we are, I think that if the board continues to pause the committee, you're doing the library and the community a disservice. I would really like to see you get it started and working again. I think so many amazing ideas for the library and the community at large have come from that committee or have been inspired by the efforts of that committee. So I strongly encourage you to bring the committee back on board sooner, as in today, rather than later, as in several months from now when maybe a report is published. And I think you have the power to do that. You could start it back up today, it could start meeting tomorrow. So I would love to see that going, especially since the board has really been cooperative over the last couple of budget planning sessions. I think there's been a lot of camaraderie and some good discussion back and forth. So I really think it's time. So, thank you very much. I pray, uh, hope you would hear my words and take them into guidance. Thank you.
Thank you, anyone else? Okay, we'll close the first audience participation then. Moving on to reports, we had the student reports, and I don't know which one of you is going to go first, but.
Yeah, I'll go first. So I'll start out with the tween and teen library programs. And the Between the Pages, which is a teen book club trivia program, was held on December 1st. And guests read Lights, Camera, Cook by Car C. Harper and answered trivia questions relating to the book, and the attendance was two. And also, the Tailwagging Reading Buddies Program was held on December 8, which is an opportunity to provide a comfortable and nonjudgmental space for children as well as their parents to read to a therapy dog to encourage the children's reading skills and confidence. And the attendance was 25. The Grab and Go STEM Kit, which featured a gingerbread engineering kit, was held on December 16th, and guests were able to register to make and decorate their own gingerbread house, and there were 60 people in attendance. And the Grab and Go Winter Solstice Kit was held on December 18th, and guests were able to register and to go get a Grab and Go kit to make a winter solstice craft, and there was 25 people in attendance. And now I'll move on to the teen space update. And during December 2021, there were 85 guests who visited the teen space, and there was no teen space on December 1st to 3rd and December 6th, as well as December 20th to 31st.
Thank you. So now for the teen advisory board update. The fourth TAB meeting of the 2021-2022 school year was on December 10. The meeting was started with a welcome from the TAB president, Farhin, and Lindsay Gotjag, Information Services Librarian. Following the welcome, teens participated in an icebreaker to help to get to know each other. This TAB meeting also featured a special program titled For the Health of It, Teen Edition, The Importance of Healthy Eating and Proper Rest. The library partnered with medical professionals and representatives, Dr. Bradley Rowan, M.D., and Sleep Medicine and Kelsey Parent, R.D. of Nutrition Services, both of them from the Ascension Providence Hospital, as well as partners from the American Cancer Society. The program was interactive and followed by a Q&amp;A session with the presenters. Nine students attended this meeting. Now, for upcoming programs, we have a few programs coming up this month. For the Health of It Teen Edition, post-pandemic mental health and stress meeting will be on February 15th. Between the Pages, Tween and Teen Book Club will be held on February 16th. Steam Leap Into Science: Balance will be held on February 22nd, and on February 23rd, the Tailwagon Reading Buddies will be held. And the TAB meeting for February will be held on February 25th. Now, for the last matter, there's a Teen Stop featured display, and the December Teen Stop display featured the Best Teen Fiction of 2021. Thank you so much.
Thank you both, very much. Does anyone have any questions or comments for our students?
I just have a comment. You make me want to be a teen again. Like, you have so much fun. I'm like, I want to go to the dogs, I want to do the trivia, I want to do it all, but, good job.
I'm sure trustee Mitchner, you probably could, could go to those events.
I'll bring a kid with me.
Sure you could. Okay, thank you, once again, for your reports. I know you're both really active. You seem like you're busy every day, not only with your school, you know, and your education and everything, but all these extracurricular things. Really appreciate your involvement. Thank you. Exams, that makes us all get that feeling.
That does not make me want to be a teen again. I retract.
Wow. Go home and study. Thank you. Okay, and as for my report, I just want to, I know that the interviews with Dr. Meadows are ongoing, and plans are still in place now for Dr. Meadows to come to our February meeting and present the information that he has collected. Also, I wanted to let you all know that I received a communication, along with Mayor Gatt, received a communication that trustee Wood unfortunately is going to be resigning from the board. And he said his increased workload, it just does not allow for him to be on the board anymore. We really appreciate his service, and I believe as of February, he will no longer be a board member. His resignation is due in February then, so, sorry about that.
I think he's planning to attend the February meeting, from what I understand, but that would be the last one.
Yeah.
That's what I, I thought I heard.
Okay. Well, I know he's been dealing with COVID issues as well, and he has not been feeling well, and that's gotten him backed up on a lot of other things, so we'll see. We'll keep our fingers crossed that he's healthy again and that he can be with us in February, for sure. Well, we do have the treasurer's report, and I believe any questions you might have regarding the treasurer's report could go to Director Farkas. Anyone have any questions about the treasurer's report? You've all had a chance to take a look at it.
We did so much better.
Yes. We've been looking at a lot of numbers lately, so I, and I know everybody's had time to think a lot about numbers lately that has to do with the library, so I'm not surprised you don't really have any questions. All right, and we'll go next then to the director's report.
Thank you so much, President Crawford. Just a couple of things that I'd like to highlight for you. First and foremost, on page 51, we do have a couple anniversaries to recognize, and these are staff anniversaries for February. April Stevenson, who is our Head of Information Services, she'll be celebrating 11 years. And Kim Swajowsky, she's a Support Services Supervisor, and she will be celebrating three years with the library next month. So please help me congratulate them. Let's see, we have, there's some updates, which I know will be part of the committee meeting or the committee reports. There's information there. Page 52, just wanted to point out that we did refurbish and put in a new drinking fountain specific to bottle usage, and we've, we were able to get this under a, uh, special pricing through Oakland County and through Oakland schools. With COVID and everything, this was something that came up this summer, and then it was installed in December. So, and it's getting lots of use. It actually tracks the amount of water, so, yes. So it is definitely being used. Our facilities department is, is checking on that regularly and making sure that it's, it's working well. People do appreciate it, knowing that a lot, a lot of people do carry their own water bottles and can, you know, decanters and things. So happy when we can provide that to them easily. I wanted to just point out, you know, with our, our COVID statistics, I know that, you know, the library is open, and we've been open with regular hours now, but we're still seeing, you know, our numbers quite low compared to what we were prior to that, and I just wanted to point that out to you. We're, we're averaging about half. 1,500 was our, our target, and what we were at at one point averaging before COVID happened. And as you can see, I'm seeing, you know, 600s, 800s. So I, I'd say not quite 2/3 yet, usage, but I do believe that that is specifically geared towards the programming and, and the fact that we don't have a lot of it going on. We have some, but not a lot of it going on yet in the building. And I, and I just want to say, you know, we have a, one particular group that we service a lot with the library is ages five and under. And that's an age right now that we know is not being offered the vaccination. So, you know, we're trying to be very careful there and with parents. And so hopefully, you know, as we move towards spring and summer, summer programming, a lot can be done outside, which we appreciate and we will do, but I do believe that's why some of those numbers are, are much lower, but we continue to watch them. And the library is being used, it's just not as busy as it normally is, so. Just wanted to bring that to your attention. Other than that, there are reports in there from all of my department heads, a lot of great information. On page 67, I did want to bring your attention to Information Services, April Stevenson, who's the head. She, she made a note, if you look at the social media stats and then underneath, "Social Media Stats, Youth and Tween", the reason she, she notes nothing for social media for the month, and that's for December, that is, I did check on that in advance, and that is due to no storytimes being held, and that's typically where we get our social media posting from for programming, is we can offer it for storytimes, and we didn't have that during the month. We take a break at that point. So just wanted you to be aware of those numbers. And then also, I wanted to point out on page 68, very happy to point out, the Lake Shore Lending Library for December had 171 checkouts. That's our second highest to when we opened up the building. And for December, I thought that was amazing, you know? And I know we're running some special little promotions and trying to attract people out there. We, we are doing some giveaways and things at the actual kiosk. If you're checking out, you might be getting a gift card or something inside there for the library cafe or the Friends bookstore. And I'm not sure if that's totally driving it, or if it's people knowing that, you know, they can quickly run over, grab something very quickly, not have to, you know, with weather, drive all the way to the library, depending on where their location is. And most, I would assume, people are using it from the north end, so that does save them some time if they can just run over to the kiosk. Other than that, I'm happy to entertain any questions that you might have in regards to my report.
Okay, Juste Dooly. You. Tori, Du, Tori, you. Kat Dooly, okay, I'll get it all straight when you do.
All right, so question and, question and comment.
Yes.
Comment first. So in terms of, in terms of our lending library, I will say, this weekend, there was a lot of, we had a lot of snow this weekend, and I was working out at Lake Shore, and there were footsteps walking up to, to the, to our kiosk. So I'm like, that's surprising to me, which I thought was great also, that someone's braving the snow to check out a material. So I thought that was great. My question in terms, comes to programs. So how many of our, so, or let me backtrack. And so the programs, are we in-person or virtual, or is it a mix right now?
There's a mix. Most are virtual. But for the most part, like the dog program that we offered, ESL and our language conversation groups have just come back. Book clubs are back, and Historical Commission, and the Friends and their Kaleidoscope. So where we have presenters that are comfortable and, and will, you know, are comfortable presenting, that's some of what we're running into, is presenters not even being comfortable yet.
Right.
Which is where Gail has actually been doing most of the virtual, and that's what she's hearing. So she's still providing it that, in that capacity. But in terms of numbers, I don't want to give you direct, but, but there's a good mix that we've slowly started to bring back. Teen space is open, so that's another thing being offered every day, Monday through Friday. You're seeing those numbers, and the kids are getting acclimated and knowing that we're back in the building for that as well. So baby steps, but we're getting there.
Right. And then in terms of future planning with programs, are we thinking about, once programs start coming back in person, would you like a hybrid mix, do you think? Would that be something we'd consider, or is it, would it just be like one or the other?
It's gonna be, it's going to depend on our capacity for technology and being able to do something that large versus it just being in virtual, you know, to be able to do both. I, I believe my staff, and I'll go back to them, Tori, and ask, but I base it on their comfort, you know, their comfortability first, presenters. But for the most part, we'd like to get them back in person. I mean, that is what our hope is.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
I want, just so you know, last night we had the Historical Commission program on what Civil War soldiers ate. You know, what did they eat while they were vet, or while they were, during the war? And it was very well attended. I mean, we had probably over 30 in attendance, which is back up to where we were when we stopped having programs. So the first program we had about a month ago was not as well attended, but we're hoping that we can build up. So people are feeling a little more comfortable, even in the wintertime, so.
Right.
That's, that's a good sign.
Right. And we, and we're planning, you know, just for you to be aware, we are, you know, we're planning community reads, so, which is a big event, and Novi will host. We have the largest space for it, and so we're hoping, and, you know, the author that's coming is excited and at this point, not concerned, you know, about the large numbers. We, we made sure that they were aware of the numbers that could be in attendance, so. Yeah.
Is that under wraps for right now?
The title?
No, the, both, the author and the title.
Well, the author and the title are the same, I mean, you know, it's the same book, but yes, until February. I, I can, I'd have.
I'm the author, but I won't tell you what the book is.
Did you have a question, trustee Mitchner?
That, that would actually give it away, because it's a first novel. So can't do that either. Ha ha, yes. But I promise, I promise you will know in February. Great question.
So, um, thanks for the report.
Sure.
So you had mentioned earlier just how, like, our library's numbers are lower, but consider COVID, and I'm grateful that you did that, because, quite frankly, like, there's, I've been following libraries all over, and so many are closed, even in Michigan. So we are open, and that's a big deal. Because a lot are curbside only, and, and no, that's no disrespect to them.
No, not at all. It's what works.
Yeah, but I just wanted to acknowledge that hopefully, people see that, you know, this is a good thing, and you never know how circumstances will go, so.
I agree with you.
I think we're all doing our best. That's what my goal was to say there.
Absolutely, no, I appreciate that.
Hanging in there. All right, and then I was just going to say, I had a question about the storytimes, because you know I love storytimes, even though I'm grown.
Sure.
So with the virtual, does that make a difference? Because you said that some of the social media wasn't accessible because the storytimes hadn't been happening?
We didn't have them in December. They take a break.
During December?
Not in December, right. Our whole staff takes a break.
That's fair. I just wanted to understand.
Yep.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. So we'll see those numbers go up in.
Oh yeah, they'll be back. Absolutely. You'll see your report.
Okay, awesome. And then I was going to say, um, okay, let me stay there for a second. So I do like the idea of the accessibility. I've talked to so many people who have different circumstances. Actually, a lot of people who might have COVID or have other medical issues where they've been really happy to be able to get services just popping on their computer, right? Like, so I just wanted to mention, that's something for us to keep doing. There's people that are now immersed in our library that before the pandemic, ironically, were not.
Right.
So I just wanted to throw that out there for them. Accessibility is also diversity, equity, and inclusion. It's an arm of it. And then for COVID-related lending, I thought Tori had said, with the lending library, that's also really helpful for people who might not be feeling like it's wise to go around other people, what they've been exposed, or if they have somebody that's been exposed, but if they can run outside, grab a book, not bother anybody, run back home, have some soup and read a book. That's kind of cool. So like, that's another measure that I think that we can look at as a COVID thing that we can lift up. And I haven't seen it lifted up in that way, but I would suggest that we do that. I know my marketing committee will be on that, but just throwing that out there.
Sure, absolutely. Thank you.
Any, yes, member Dooly?
Julie, I have a question. With the DEI scorecard specifically, did you want to, like, high-level talk about that? Because I don't think we've really talked about that publicly yet, and I know it's like just starting out, but maybe you can, like, high-level explain what that's going to be about, that the staff's participating in? Because I thought it was really exciting.
I'd like, if you don't mind, I'll bring it back, and then I'll put some information in the packet for next month.
That would be really cool.
I just don't want to freestyle without having it in front of me.
Totally get it. But that would be, that would be great.
Yeah, our board, or our staff committee has started, from it originally being brought to the DEI Board Committee.
Right.
I mean, we did bring it, and I said, you know, we're gonna try this. I am, I wanted to reach out to ALA, which I've not had success with, with the diversity, their contacts at the diversity office, because I was looking for someone actually to give my staff and I kind of a, an idea of, how did it come about, what made them formulated in that way, you know, from the actual people that created it. So I have reached out to them, I haven't heard, but it's good to, you know, get a sense from where they put this together, and why, and, you know, what, what they would hope libraries would be looking for, for outcomes and things like that. So I wanted to hear it from the source, which there were three people that were actually on the committee that put the scorecard together. And, but I'll be happy to put it in the packet for next month.
Thank you so much.
Sure.
Member Missioner.
I'll be fast. I just want to piggyback on what Trustee Dooley had mentioned, because I know that was first brought to us as a board, and I'm still interested in it. And then, of course, we paused, so we lost our opportunity to be involved. And that was something that I was really excited about. And I know that, it seemed like other people were too. So a great way to collaborate, but also to lead in that, in that way. So just throwing that out there. Hopefully, when we're unpause, we can also be a part of it like it was originally proposed as well.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to our second audience-
Thank you.
-public comment. In order to hear all citizen comments at a reasonable hour, the Library Board requests that speakers respect the three-minute time limit. This is not a question-answer session, however, it's an opportunity to voice your thoughts. With the Library Board, citizens must state their first, last name, and address. Anyone wish to come forward? Okay, moving on. Committee reports. The Policy Committee, there was no meeting and no report. And HR Committee did meet, and we have another meeting coming up. The Finance Committee, there was no meeting and no report. Events and marketing, is there anything you wish to share?
So for, it's in the packet on page eighty-four. Julie's awesome, and she takes all my, all my notes from our agenda. One of the things that we're really looking at is, or we're heading towards, for the public to know, is our Read Box fundraiser. And that's going to be taking place in April to recognize National Library Week. And we're hoping to auction off two boxes. And it's really exciting, because we have these read boxes actually all over the city. And that's what kind of inspired it, because we were thinking, well, how can we increase access? And wouldn't it be cool if the public, or even a company, or an organization could possibly, like, also have access to a Read Box, and then put it where they see fit? Because I have a neighbor that has their own, and I thought it was really cool. So we're, you know, constantly working towards that. We just met and went over the very first draft of a marketing plan that Dana put together. She's, obviously, she's phenomenal, and I love it. So we're still going to be working on that and talking about that, because a lot of that's gonna be in lockstep with strategic planning. So there's nothing that's going to be brought forth to the board anytime soon. But we're kind of talking about it and getting the framework for that. And then you'll see the attended events. And thank you, I appreciate the latitude that you gave me. We were so busy with budgets, I didn't give you enough time to send me the info like I usually do, so I appreciate that. And that's it from us. And we'll be meeting again soon.
Okay, Strategic Planning, there was no meeting and no report. Building Landscape, there was no meeting, no report. Bylaws, there was no meeting, no report. And DEI, I know that Trustee Missioner has requested to address the Library Board, otherwise, there's no meeting and no report. So go ahead.
I appreciate it, thanks. Just get that closer to me. Yeah, so thank you so much. You know, I just wanted to make sure that this DEI Committee never has a time where it's blank. My fear is erasure. I know it's paused. From what you said, you're hoping that after Lee gets back with us and gives his report, that we'll be able to come back together. I hear that. But I'm hoping that we always have a space to talk about DEI in our board level. You know, I think, we all know that some of the things in this packet wouldn't have happened without our board. Like, a lot of the things that happened, we're board initiatives that started, even the goals, I wrote those, you know. So I just want to make sure that we're not erasing the work that the DEI Committee has done, the founding members and the current members, and that we're able to still participate, because we are the leaders, and we do set the stage for the staff. We govern, right? So I just hope that we are able to keep that in mind. You know, I was taken aback when, last month, Trustee Chair Curry read a huge list, and said, aren't we considering all this? We have so much work to do. And I thought, he's right. We do have a lot of work to do. The list was so long, like, I don't even have it, because it was too long. I don't know where I could find that. It's, I don't even know if you put it in the minutes, because it was a long list of needs. And it's not just one type of person. Even, we talked about accessibility, we talk about age, we talk about, sure, ethnicity, race, gender, so many needs, right? So DEI being missed and being paused is definitely something that's a disservice, but I think it can be an opportunity to be really cool. If we're happy about what's happening in here, I think we can be happy about what we can do. And representation matters. And as I look at this annual report, I'm really blown away. A lot is good in there, but I don't see myself as suffering where I see myself. And I don't know if anyone noticed that, but when you have a person of color that represents that color, they would notice that. So I didn't get to see that. I would have said, there's not one black person in here. And I'll tell you what's really important. You might think, oh, Tara, there's a lot of people. Why are you thinking about you? I'm not thinking about me. I'm thinking about the little kid that will look in here and think, oh, there's a trustee there, that's good. But what about the people who participate? And what about some of the initiatives that we made last year? Two thousand and twenty kicked this off, and we talked about, actually, the black community is what kicked it off, right? Because there was that disservice and injustice with George Floyd, that's what kicked it off. For those of you who are not aware, you can go back to the June two thousand and twenty meeting and look at those minutes. But there's not one person in this whole annual report, or that was on the screen for the larger report, that was black. So representation isn't there. I don't think it was intentional, please understand. But this is an example of what I'm talking about. Not trying to hurt anybody. I think we're all hard workers. I think we all have good hearts. But there's a need here. So that's what I wanted to say. Thank you so much. That's fine.
Anyone else? All right, moving along then, we are coming to the Matters for Board Action. I know we've had two very productive budget meetings, and I want to thank you all for the time and effort that you put in to study those budget numbers and everything in advance before we got to those meetings. That was very helpful, and we had great questions. And so, and you've also had ample time now to get your questions answered prior to today. So I think probably we are all ready to move forward and voting on the budget as presented. So I will look for a motion to approve the two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two General Fund Budget Year End. Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Okay. Trustee Missioner, a second?
You have me to say it out. I can say it out if you want me to.
Second, okay. All right, second, Dooley. All right. Any discussion? Seeing none? I have, I have Member Bartlet call the roll.
Trustee Yu?
Yes.
Trustee Bartlet votes yes. Trustee Crawford?
Yes.
Trustee Dooley?
Yes.
Trustee Missioner?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay. Yes.
Before you present number two, I'd like to just address one small detail for you.
Sure.
If you look to page forty-three, which is the two sixty-nine, sorry.
Page forty-three, which is the two sixty-nine Library Contributed Funds, just, if you look at the very left side, which is the actual budget categories and their definitions, if you go down to the very bottom at Capital Outlay, there are two lines, Automated Return System and Main Entrance Design. I just want to go on record that those two account numbers will change. I got an email today from the city, from the Finance Department, that the numbers I have for account numbers are incorrect. They have new ones. That's the only change that you will see as we move forward with, with the budget.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Any questions about that? No? All right. So I'll entertain a motion then to, to approve the Contributed Fund Budget Year End for two thousand and twenty-two. Member Bartlet, how about you? Okay, support, Member Yu?
Support.
Here we go. We have a motion in a second. And any discussion? Seeing none, I will ask Member Bartlet to call the roll.
Trustee Bartlet votes yes. Trustee Crawford?
Yes.
Trustee Dooley?
Yes.
Trustee Missioner?
Yes.
Trustee?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
All right. Moving along to the General Fund Budget for two thousand and twenty-three. I'll entertain a motion then to approve this budget as we go. How about Member Dooley? How about Member Missioner, a second? Thank you very much.
I'll take it.
Any discussion? All right. Seeing none, Member Bartlet, please call the roll.
Trustee Crawford?
Yes.
Trustee Dooley?
Yes.
Trustee Missioner?
Yes.
Trustee Yu?
Yes.
Trustee Bartlet votes yes. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. And now we're moving on to the Contributed Fund Budget for two thousand and twenty-three. I'll entertain a motion. Member Yu?
I was gonna just, I kept my mic unmuted. Motion to approve.
Okay, a second, Member Missioner. Oh, Member Dooley, sorry.
I'll get the second.
Okay. Member Dooley, any discussion? Seeing none, Member Bartlet, please call the roll.
Trustee Crawford?
Yes.
Trustee Dooley?
Yes.
Trustee Missioner?
Yes.
Trustee Yu?
Yes.
Trustee Bartlet votes yes. Motion carries five zero.
Okay. Moving along then to the General Fund Budget as projected. This is the two thousand and thirty, two thousand and twenty-four projected budget. I'll ask for a motion, Member Dooley. Oh.
See?
You're gonna be a second.
Trustee Missioner wanted to make that motion.
You're gonna be a second. Missioner will be a second.
Okay.
Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, Member Bartlet, please call the roll.
Trustee Missioner?
Yes.
Trustee Yu?
Yes.
Trustee Bartlet votes yes. Trustee Crawford?
Yes.
Trustee Dooley?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay, we're shifting away from the budgets here, and we are going to be-
You've got one more, one more.
I just wishful thinking on my part, sorry. Okay, General Fund Budget. I already had it crossed off. I was so sure it was gonna go well. So, General Fund Budget. Member Missioner, you want to?
I'll take it.
And Member Dooley, you want to be a second?
I will totally second that one.
Okay, very good. Any discussion? Seeing none? Member Bartlet, please call-
Trustee Yu?
Yes.
Trustee Bartlet votes yes. Trustee Crawford?
Yes.
Trustee Dooley?
Yes.
Trustee Missioner?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
See, I like it when you guys keep me on my toes. You know, I really knew what I was doing, and I just wanted, it was a test to see if you guys were paying attention. That's all.
We need that.
Yes.
Just thank you for the approval on the budgets. For the year-end, the information I received from the City Finance Department is that the year-end budget of two thousand and twenty-two that we're currently in, they will have that updated for third quarter, and you'll look to see those changes by April. So just to give you all a heads up. Okay?
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
So moving away from the budgets, we're going to be approving the second draft. You've had a chance to take a look at the NPL at your door, Usage Policy. And maybe for the audience, if you, Julie, if you'd just like to give us just a brief overview of what that program is?
Absolutely. So we're on page eighty-five and eighty-six. And this is a new service, actually, last year budget, it was brought to the Library Board to consider putting in place a mail service, where we can send library materials to people's homes. They do have to have a mail location. But we're not the first. I wish I could tell you we were, but we're not. We've, we've allowed other libraries across, across Michigan and across the states have been doing this program. It's a very successful program when we looked into it. And again, you know, having the mindset of removing barriers from our library and offering more accessibility, we wanted to add this service to our residents of Novi. On page eighty-five, when I gave you the first draft back at the first budget meeting on the fifteenth, there were a couple of questions that were raised at that time. I went ahead and answered those for you. It will be seventy bags that we do have that we will start with. And that was based on an average from a number of libraries that we looked at, big and small, and then the size of our population, things like that, and how it also compared to other libraries, in order to give us that, that figure to start with. There was a question about library cards, and it has to be a Novi resident that uses the card. And it is only for mail service. So they, they have to be choosing to go to that particular status in order to use it. You definitely can come into the library. We are not keeping people from ever coming into our building. You know, libraries are for anyone and everyone. Anyone can walk into a public library. But if you're in mail status, and you've chosen to be in mail status, you won't be able to check out a material from the library. You can sit and read, you can read magazines, you know, but you won't be able to physically check out, because that's the status that changes on your library card. So you won't be able to use a checkout, a self-checkout. You won't be able to use Lake Shore Lending Library, because you're choosing to be a mail, you know, you're choosing to be with that new service of mail. But, and the minimum also is, you have to at least choose four weeks, because to mail out the materials, have that checkout period, and then to get it back. So that would be the minimum that you would be using the service. If you're only going to be a couple of weeks, we probably suggest connecting with, you know, a neighbor or someone. And we can even set up for you, you know, if you've got a neighbor to come pick up materials, if you give that okay, you know, we've done that in the past, where we've had people bring your actual, you'll need to bring the library card that belongs to the books, because that's how we, we have that set up. But, so it is strictly for mail, but lots of different options for that. You know, maybe there's a stay-at-home mom who at this time is, you know, just had a baby, and, you know, isn't looking to get out, but wants materials to come to the home. Perhaps there's someone on a medical, you know, medical leave. Maybe someone is just afraid to come into the building still. We understand that because of COVID. So we don't want this. I, I think, at one time, I have no problem saying this, that I do believe it was geared towards our older population, but I do believe it can be used by anyone who would want this type of service. So we're excited. I don't have a date yet for launch. Fingers crossed, it will be in February. We'll make sure, we've, we are putting in the e-newsletter to be looking for it, but we don't have the date of the actual launch yet. We're actually waiting on a few things that have to be shored up. And for our staff to be able to go through the process, we'd like them to train and get the feel of it. So they're doing that now, and then we should be ready to go.
It'll be interesting to see how it turns out then. Trustee Missioner?
Thank you. This is, this seems really great. And thank you for answering that question. I think I was the one to ask number two of you.
Absolutely.
So I just had a, I just wanted a clarification point. It's per patron, so like, if I live with three people, it's just my card. It's not their cards.
Correct. It's by the card.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yes. Member Yu?
Hi. So just to clarify, so it's going through the general postal service, not like through UPS?
It's going through general, we've, yes, we've worked with our local postal service.
Well, I do believe, you know, in new programs, nothing ventured, nothing gained. So, I mean, we're starting something, and if we don't see that it's working out, or if really very few people are interested, we've got to give it a chance.
Right.
And it's certainly, especially in the wintertime, and when people, especially with the whole COVID thing going on, I know a lot of, a lot of people of all ages that really are still worried about going into the general public. So, and there may be some that'll never come out of their house again. I mean, we just don't know. So.
Well, we can still help them.
Yeah, yeah. No, I think it's really a great creative use of our program ideas and everything, and staff time, too. So we'll see.
Yeah, the Friends were a big supporter of it. They, you know, they gave us the seed money to start the program. And I, I think you already saw in budget that I actually did put an additional amount in there, even for the next budget year, in case we need it. If they can support it in some way, we would be still receiving some funds from them for this project.
Okay. So you've had time to think about it and get your question. Oh.
Yes.
That little, that little finger.
So Julie, I, the, the whole thing about having a valid Novi Public Library card in good standing, do you, do you think we're going to anticipate anyone, like, brand-spanking new, that hasn't had a card before, and they don't have a record with us, to be able to participate? So this might be the first time they-
They, they can.
Okay.
Oh, absolutely.
I just want to make sure.
I mean, if you're, if you're coming in, you know, the question would be, when you're getting a library card, is how, how are you going to be using it? You know, I guess that's a new talking point with getting a library card, is, do you think you'll be using the building and coming in? Or would you prefer the mail service?
Okay.
So that's, that's one of the new points.
Okay, yeah, because that's-
I think if someone comes in to get the card, the assumption would be, they're going to be using the building. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah.
But we, we want to make sure they have that option.
Right. Because I was thinking, you know, when we eventually launch our online registration service?
Yes.
Like, that's something that, I don't know if we'll be able to accommodate this on there yet, or we can roll that out later, because I know we want to, you know, iron out the kinks of when we do launch technology like that.
Right.
But I was just starting to think about that. I'm like, oh, my gosh, what if they sign up online? We have to make sure we can accommodate that.
And with this service, you have to actually talk with the staff person, though, to get this going. There's a lot of questions and an application. There's a lot of questions and an application.
Okay.
Because we need some details from you in, in order to make the service the most useful to, to the guest.
So if someone's, so if someone's homebound, they can just call?
Yes.
And then the, our staff will fill out the application.
Yes.
Perfect.
We can do it in-house for them or they can do the application online and send it in. So we've made options already for that already.
Beautiful. That's beautiful. Thank you.
Okay.
Great question.
And I'm presuming there's gonna be a big marketing campaign on this particular service?
There will be.
Because you can tell just by our questions, you know, that...
For sure. And, and we know that we can target some particular groups, you know, I, I think I shared, you know, we've, we've had people actually questioning, you know, ways for the library to reach out with Fox Run a little differently and we let them know that this was coming. So that's just one example.
Okay. Well, I would think with some of the senior centers or assisted living or whatever, they have, some of them have their own library by us, right? I mean, we supply books to that, to Fox Run, right? They have their own library.
We, we don't with Fox Run. They actually, they're actually very independent.
Okay.
We supply...
So they have their own library?
They have their own library, but we have a lot of people who come in who use the Novi library and they have their own cards.
Okay.
And we do card registration with them. We go onsite in order to do that and, and help them out. And we, we do that with Meadowbrook. We do that pretty much, I think we have five locations that we do that with. With Fox Run, because we've been told of their independence, you know, they like to get out and come to the library. They also have transportation that brings them to the library too. So they have some things that are built in. But we know of some people that won't and this is an option then for us to get them those materials.
Very good. Very good. Any other questions or concerns? Nope?
Nope.
Okay. Um, good.
So the red is the change that you saw from the last time. I, that's the only change to the policy on page 86.
Okay.
That will be included.
Okay. All right. So I'll entertain a motion then to approve the NPL at your door usage, second draft.
I'd like to make the, the motion to approve NPL at your door second draft.
Okay. Member Dooley, uh, wait, Marbury?
A second.
Member Michener wants a second?
Yes.
All right. And any dis, more discussion? Seeing none, Member Bartlett, please call the roll.
Trustee Dooley?
Yes.
Trustee Michener?
Yes.
Trustee Yu?
Yes.
Trustee Bartlett votes yes. Trustee Crawford?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Okay.
More to come. We'll keep you updated.
Okay. At this point, we are going to be entering closed session and we will be returning so that we can adjourn. We're, we're gonna be discussing the director's mid-year review and there will not be any voting during that time. So we'll be entering closed session, so I'll need a motion to do that. Yes.
Before you do that, Madam President?
Yeah.
I was thinking about what you saw, you know, at another public body do. And there is a way, if you had noticed a special meeting after this meeting, you could have adjourned this meeting and then went into your other one. And that may have been what that other public body did. Some public bodies notice two meetings separately for the same night.
I see.
And then you would have adjourned and, and maybe that's what that other public body had done.
That other public body, yeah, I know. I know. That other public body. Okay. Well, yeah.
Would you like to wait until after they were closed or, or hey?
We'll, we'll end up...
Don't wanna leave too soon.
Oh, no, 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 no. I don't, I don't think it'll be necessary. I mean, we're just gonna be discussing things in there.
And then come back up.
It'll be very quick. But we will not be returning to do any business, so...
Correct.
We'll let everybody know that. We'll just be returning to adjourn. So I will need a motion to enter into closed session.
Motion, motion entry.
Okay. Member Yu makes a motion?
Close session.
Second, Dooley. Dooley, Marry?
I thought Trustee Bartlett did it. Trustee Bartlett did.
Okay. Yeah, he never gets to vote.
Yeah.
I mean, he never gets to do it. Okay. Uh, any discussion about going into closed session? Seeing none, Member Bartlett, please call the roll.
Trustee Yu?
Yes.
Trustee Bartlett votes yes. Trustee Crawford?
Yes.
Trustee Dooley?
Yes.
Trustee Michener?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.